We'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Appreciate all of you being here today, and this is important, and it's great that all of you are here to represent your companies and see if we can work some of this system out. I would like to start with a pledge of allegiance if we could. Vice Mayor, could I ask you to do that, please?
Absolutely. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, I appreciate you being here because I know all of us are busy and taking time out of your day to be here and discuss this important meeting. Of course, this is the Kingman City Development Process Workshop, and there was some agendas put up on the table. I'm not sure, some of you got here early and might not have got some, but if you'd like, you can grab one. And sort of the format we would like to follow, now because so far I have nineteen of you signed up to speak, we would like to end this meeting around four thirty at the maximum. We can go till four forty because we do have city council at five o'clock. So looking at everybody that wants to speak, I would like to try to limit you to three minutes. I know that's short, but if you can be concise in your comments and or if there's multiple of you that all work for the same company, maybe one person come up from that company to share their thoughts as far as representing the company. We'll sort of play it by ear. Obviously, we don't want to hold tight to it, but I did want to give you some guidelines of what we're looking at. So we're going to actually start right now with public comment, if that's all right. And first, we'd like to invite Michael Reed with Civil Works to come up.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Try and make this real short and sweet. I just want to make sure that everybody got a letter from Mr. Noble representing Civil Works Engineering. He apologizes today for not being able to attend, so he asked that I come down and speak on his behalf. Just real quick, I'm going to give you a little bit of a background of my history. I worked thirty-one years for an agency about three times the size of Kingman. I won't tell you what state that came from because you may all run me out of here, but thirty-one years, last fifteen years, I was a city engineer for the engineering and building department. So we did project approvals. We actually processed the building permits for industrial subdivisions and industrial projects as well. So I understand everything that's going on here today. I went through the same pain as the Public Works Director in my last seven years at this agency, mid-two thousands, two thousand and five, and around two thousand and ten. We had some serious issues in processing permits. Actual project approvals were moving fairly well, but the permitting process was not moving along in a good pace. So we actually implemented a quarterly meeting with the development community, and we actually had the mayor, the city manager, who would attend those quarterly meetings, and we worked as a collaborative group to actually adjust everything that our agency was doing. And in the end, it was very beneficial to our agency. It was a win-win situation. Staff had better guidelines to actually review the projects and to actually get them out in a timely manner. It was financially feasible situation for the private sector, and it was a win-win in the sense that our community was very motivated and project-driven, business-driven community, and the economic impacts of that were notified or actually realized within a short period of time, less than a year. It really made a huge difference. So I'm not here to guide you guys in anything that you want to do. If you have any specific questions, what our agency did, I'd be happy to answer those. But in Jed's letter, there's some recommendations, Mr. Noble's letter, at the back, that a lot of those recommendations is exactly what our agency did. And again, they were very successful. One thing within our agency was the flow chart. The flow chart was the first thing that we did. The flow chart was reviewed during the quarterly meetings, and it took us about three meetings to finalize that flow chart. But what that flow chart did is it allowed consensus with the private sector and the public agency, and then from there, we were able to give that to our consultants to modify software for, not only for our permitting process, but also for our project approval process and our getting the projects to city council. So we had software implemented for all three of those stages. It was very, very beneficial in the sense that what we realized is that the departments were, they were actually operating independently of each other. And when you have a department head that runs each department and you're operating independently from each other, that communication tends to lag and is not at the level that it should be. And I'll go back early in my career. At one point in time, Public Works and Community Development had one director over both departments, and that's when we were a small agency. As we got bigger, those two departments separated, and Public Works was engineering and building and the maintenance group. Community Development, they took care of all the planning, zoning, and project approval in the beginning stages. When we split that, am I over three minutes?
Sorry, I'm just going to, about the three minutes.
Yeah, okay. Just a last comment on regards to that is that when we had that one director over those two departments, it worked great. It absolutely really worked great. So thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you for your comments. Wayne Wissinger?
Oh, that's okay. I didn't.
Oh, you were just signing in?
Yeah.
Okay, real good. Thank you. Ted Murray? You were just signing?
I'm observing on him.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ted. Right, and yeah, and of course, our first speaker, I think, took about close to almost five minutes, so, but that'll spread it out a little bit. Donnie Ward and Lori?
Just signed in.
Just signed in? Great, thank you. John Timko, John, did you just sign in also? Still see, you guys, all these good people are giving you some more time. That's great.
We're helping, yeah.
That's great. Thank you. Brandon Craig?
Signing in.
Just signing in. Thanks, Brandon. Dennis, is it Holt?
X.
X.
Same as everyone.
Same, just signing in. Okay, great. Jim Casey or Kerry?
I was just signing in.
Kevin, you were just signing in too? Kevin Sarkisian?
Yes.
So it looks like a lot of you have been just signing in. So we, Mr. Reed, we might end up giving you some more time, but we will see. Let's get to, let's get, see how this goes. Scott Jackson from Engel Homes. Scott, did you want to come up and say anything? I know Tyler's here.
Travis, I don't know.
And Travis?
Do you want to talk first?
You're jumping up to his place, Travis.
Calling a meeting this, like this, is not necessarily, nobody's going to rush up here to call out the guys that we work with every day, right? So it's, you've got to have a little bit of respect for that, but...
But you're the face of the company.
Yes. Most importantly, I would like to say that I sent an email. I think it probably, everybody that was invited to this meeting had the ability to get that, and that's Engel Homes comments, right? Like, we took a lot of time. We didn't want to, like, just things, put things on there that we didn't believe were important or that could be construed as something different than what it was. Like, these are issues. These are grievances. We, for years, have asked on many occasions to take some of these or all of these seriously with staff, and it just never seemed like we've been able to do that, right? There's been multiple times where we worked with staff closely to develop, I believe it was a policy, to get access to early permits. And staff created a policy, right? There's now a policy, piece of paper, that they can email around that says early permit agreement. It doesn't work, right? So it's, and I've tried to voice that grievance, right, to say, hey, this is not, and it's just like we can never really get an audience that seems like they listen, right, or care much more than the five minutes of the meeting and take some of those grievances serious. It's not that we want somebody to agree with us all the time, right? I feel like we value your time and we value city staff's time, right? So a lot of these issues, if there was an alternative to an early permits agreement, we'd love to do it. And a lot of these things that we're asking for, we work with the county also, right? There are a lot of, the early permits process is entirely different animal with the county, right? It works, and it's very easy and user-friendly. So a lot of these things, I mean, I don't think we need to invent the will, but we just need to pay attention to other wills. So rather than go through every one of these things, we'd be happy to answer questions and maybe this, we were unaware of what this format was, right, today? So I think, got any questions? I don't think, or I don't think it's set up where you're going to be asking us questions.
Yeah, we can ask questions.
Yes, hold on. I think a lot of you have just signed up just to check in, so we appreciate you being here. It doesn't sound like we have a lot, so I think we can change the format a little bit, and council can ask some of these people quite, I mean, some of you, as you come up, questions to talk about these things. And that way, it covers it since you're up here. Either that or we're going to end up calling you back up here anyway. So, okay. Go ahead, council.
Yeah, I just kind of want to take a few steps back because I want to make sure that we use this time wisely today. We are here because several council members have heard from the building community that what we are hearing is that it's very difficult to get a project completed in the city of Kingman. There are delays, there are extra hoops, it's hard to get information, and then in comparison to, say, Bullhead or the county, Kingman's much more difficult and sometimes more expensive. And so what is happening is that we are not following through with our goals to make economic development a focus in Kingman and bring in, whether it's homes or new retail. And so we're here because we need to hear specifics from all of you, what your experience is, and the suggestions on how we can improve that, what's worked in other places, because it is our goal to make Kingman a destination where people can bring in new business, and we're easy to work with, we're open for business, I think is the quote that a lot of us use quite often. So I want to make sure that everybody has a chance to really express to us what you're experiencing, what some of your solutions are, and even if, you know, staff wants to jump in and kind of talk about some of the initial plans and changes that we can make. So I know everybody's a little gun-shy about getting up here, and you don't want to go through your list, but it's really important that we make the most of today's meeting so that we have a good idea of what your experience is and so that we can sort of tackle this and make things better for our community.
I mean, if that's the preferred format, number one, right, we, I think a lot of people in the development community think it'd be really helpful to be open on Fridays, right? I know there's a strong sentiment, right, and there's a lot of really good reasons that got you where you guys are today, but I think our grievances still stand, right? Another day available to be able to work with city staff to solve the problems that is economic development, right? It would be helpful to us, or we believe that, right? That's...
And I just wanted to say, thank you, Travis, for coming up and speaking. Thank you to all of you that sent letters of communication and really took the time to itemize where your struggles are. It gave me a good checklist to kind of go off of, and I appreciate those that took the time to do it, and those that may want to do that after this meeting, please feel free to do so and send it over to the council because as we are, this is kind of evolving, and so as we're evolving, we want to make sure that we're effective. And the only way to be effective is to make sure that we're addressing your concerns. So communication's going to be key, and we are serious as a council to hold staff accountable. So I just want you to know that your time is well-spent today, and your communications do not go unread.
Thank you.
Well, and Counselor Sayley pointed out, and I'm sure Vice Mayor shares the same opinion as, it is important of working together. So we want to hear, and that's why we had this, you know, to hear your complaints and your concerns so we can solve the problems and work together to make this city a great city. So we appreciate you being here, Travis.
Right, and what you just said there, right, there's, that's something that I feel like is missing, right? There is, if I thought city staff, the city manager, were ultra approachable and concerned with these issues, it might change, right? And I'm a guy that just muddle around, try to fix problems and build things, right? That's what I enjoy to do, right? And I, if you give me somebody helpful that I can talk to and solve problems, you won't ever hear from me, right? That's just my nature, right? And I don't know that you guys have somebody like that. Like, I don't, when you bring an issue, there's a good chance it's not going to go anywhere, right? So that's, I just wanted to make a comment back on that, right?
Well, let's hope this goes somewhere.
It would be really helpful to have a relationship like that, for everybody to be able to have somebody that they could trust to go to that was regardless of the outcome, but was going to take it seriously, right? Run it up the totem pole. We don't have that.
Okay. Anything else?
I have a list. If you'd like me to go through the list, is this...
If you can cover it quickly, because I'm not sure how many other people, or do you want to, you tell me. How many else is going?
How many of you?
It sounds like you're representing a number of them, and that you all share similar concerns. So Travis, you are the point man. It sounds like...
Number two is, like, about review times, right? Regardless of what standard we want to use to measure review times, there needs to be one, right? That's somewhat reliable, right? And that somebody's, if they don't hit those, there's an accountability system, right? I think, all I can say is that the county does that, right, and does a fairly good version. I don't know. They could have magicians in the back room. We could try that, what they're doing. But yes, review times end up being way longer than I believe we ever expected and even city staff expected. And I believe they have a, there's reasons why, right? I believe they are severely short on staff in many departments. That, that's years in the making, right? That's not something that happened overnight. They've needed help for a long, long, long time. So we need some kind of relevant standard to measure against. What we were just talking about, right, it's number three. It would be nice to be able to bring an issue, to whether it's Phil at engineering, whether it's Ron, the city manager, and be able to get an answer, right? Not necessarily the answer we want, but be able to get an answer and have a good answer, right? But like, it makes sense, right? I don't want an answer that doesn't make any sense, right? No, we don't want that. That doesn't make any sense. But that is a big hole in the system down here, is there's nobody that can make decisions and stand behind them. There's some examples there. I'd be happy to go into some examples.
Why don't you share one?
Okay. There's a, a lot of time curbs come down, there's, drainage is important. City engineering takes it very serious, and we've had problems in the past, right? So curbs are usually a way to transfer water from one subdivision to the other. Certain kind of curbs carry certain amount of water versus a different curb, right? When you're talking lots of water, you're a lot of times getting to the point where you have a vertical curb, like a six-inch vertical curb, and to build and pour all the concrete necessary to get ADA access around that later, it's a very expensive type of curb to build. It costs more originally to build, it takes more concrete, and then it's very complicated to get the driveway cuts correct and then get your ADA ramps poured around them later on, and expensive. I think we, like, a $2,000 per house number, right, of what this vertical curb with ADA ramps versus a proposed wedge curb, right? It's never been approved by the city, and that's been the problem, right? We've used it in the county. We've asked the city to consider using this, right? There might be some very good reasons why we should never use this curb in the city, but that's what I'm asking for, is those good reasons. We, my, my original request was 2021, right? We still don't have an answer. We've, that's an example. Number four. There was a newly passed, I think the old, I mean, anybody can correct me, and there's probably staff that shouldn't and will, but the old zoning code was a shorter document, right? Spitball a number, maybe it was a hundred-page document, and it was dated, right? Needed some updating. The new document is four hundred and seventy-three pages long, and our opinion is it's riddled with just either things that got overlooked or just absolute errors, right? One of these examples is there's a requirement that solar panels can't be visible from the street. I, I'm about aesthetics, right? I don't like seeing solar panels on people's roofs, but that's almost an impossibility, right? Engel Homes happens to be in the solar business, right, so we care much about that rule. I will agree, it's not being enforced right now, but it, I don't like the ability for so, any of these rules at a later point to be weaponized, right? To say, maybe it should be fixed, right? That's just one example. There, I'll move on. But I think that the new code should be, we went through and found at least seventy different things that I'm certain most of you aren't aware of, right? When we were having these public hearings, the, not all of this was talked about in those public meetings, and I've asked you, I mean, many of you on many occasions, were you aware that when you passed this, this is what happened? And at every one of those instances, the answer's been no, right? So I think there was a lot of things that were passed that you guys are not aware of. I'll give you some examples on number five. So a lot of times, we're out buying real estate, right? Large, I mean, small tracts of real estate, but it's important for us, before we purchase that, to get an understanding of what's going to be required, right? So many times, we'll, before we purchase, we will, either in a meeting or in the form of email, try to ask a comprehensive question about what's going to be required, right? One of those examples was Kingman Crossings. We purchased thirteen phases based on, like, a memo that I think might have been Mike Pryor years ago that the city created, and then, so we purchased this piece of property based on some understandings, right, and then we get to go to develop, right? We hire our engineer, we come up with improvement plans, and things that turn out entirely different, right? For good reasons, maybe, right? Maybe the guy that put the memo together at engineering slapped it together and missed a bunch of stuff. But nonetheless, we made a lot of decisions and made some assumptions about how this project was going to go and spent money based on that, and it was entirely different, right? We, yeah, we purchased these properties years ago and have been working with city staff to get approvals, and just a painful process, right? This happened again on Rancho Santa Fe. Before we purchased these phases, we asked in the form of an email what kind of we could expect. We purchased these phases, we built phase one, we go to build phase two, and it's changed, right? It's dramatically more expensive to do now with their money. So again, I don't know, it's, it's, I don't know the answer to that, right? But we need somebody that we can be able to talk to, be able to get, communicate with, and then somebody at engineering that will stand behind that, right? And maybe that, so I don't want to tell how, I don't know the answer of how, how to fix it. But we've struggled with the building department slash fire department that, there's been instances where we needed input, right? There was an example of fire hydrant placements. It took months and months to get the answer, right? It shouldn't, I don't know why, but it seemed like the fire chief stayed at a distance and didn't get involved and kind of just let us muddle around, right, for months. I believe, like, this early permit process, right? Number, I think I skipped. No. Number seven. Like, a lot of times, we are going to council, like, the subdivision is finished, right, and we're going to get council approve it. It seems like a lot of times that we need to give Phil or whoever your city engineer is the ability to make some more administrative decisions and approval in the approval process so that we're not always being hamstrung to be, trying to get on agenda to come back here to get your guys' approval, which is too complicated. And so I think, and this is back to that early permit process, right? City staff develops something, it doesn't work, we need to fix it, right? It's very important to our business, right? We, sometimes, most of the times, it'll take a couple of years, right? We work to get a subdivision, plans approved, you run it through the process, and maybe two years later, you're trying to get to a city council meeting so that you can go build homes, right? That's the, that's the prize. And sometimes that process can stretch out for months, right? For good reasons and bad reasons. So that's an example, right? Being able to give your city engineer some authority to be able to, where he can fix these problems, right? He can, yeah, you guys will go get on the next city council meeting.
Before you move on, I know we had talked about this, because I just want to clarify, one of the things they're talking about is it's really difficult, once everything's finished, to just get onto a P and Z meeting. There's delays or you don't, there's not a clear process...
A council meeting, right?
...to get to a council meeting to get approvals.
Yes. There is, no, I mean, I believe that staff should have an instinct about where projects are, right? Rancho Santa Fe High is going to be finished pretty soon. Maybe we should have all that documentation ready to go so once they request to get on a council meeting, it's not a month and a half process. It's, there's no, there's no policy that I know of at the end of how you do that, right? It's, I send Sean an email, and I hope that he answers it. I don't think that's the best process, right? I think we need something that's a little bit more concrete, maybe easier, right? Same policy related to the city clerk, right? So I come here, I'm here tonight, get a, at tonight's council meeting to get a Kingman Crossing C signed off. It's been years, right? Years, we've been building that, we were, but I actually need that resolution, right? That's gonna, you're probably gonna have to sign, and it needs a couple of signatures, and then the clerk's gonna have to go get that recorded, and then if you just drop that in a black hole called the recorder's office and don't get a copy, it can take two or three weeks to get a copy, right? So now we have the council meeting, that was the prize. Now we just keep moving that goalpost, right, where I need that resolution so I can deed the documents, deed the parcels out of the city trust, back to the development company so we can build homes. So, to answer the question. Okay. Guys can ask questions while I'm stumbling through my notes here, so.
How are we doing on your list?
Getting, yeah, I think we should probably let some other people talk, and then if there's some free time, can I come back up?
What about number eight?
Okay. You see? Good.
And that's why, I think, time-wise, I think, from what I can see on this list, I think a lot of people just signed in, but I know there's a couple other ones that probably wanted to share something, so.
Yeah, all of this, I mean, you asked number eight, right, for me to comment. Yeah, time is money, right? And I don't, so when it takes years to develop a phase of a subdivision and it takes months to get back on, all of that is affecting the cost, right? We many times have loans on these projects, we're paying interest. So absolutely, like, yeah, all of this affects the bottom line and the cost of homes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Travis.
Okay.
If there's extra time, I'll invite you back up. If there's extra time, I'll invite you back up. Doug Lent?
Yes.
Okay, real good. Thank you, Doug. John Gahl?
Good afternoon, Your Honor and members of the council. Good to see some of you after many years, even Kyle Cooper. I used to develop back here in the real estate boom and fortunately got out right before the bust, so I came back and I want to offer a little different perspective because I came back from Asia about six months ago and was looking at projects to develop in town and heard not the most flattering things about the city of Kingman and the process of getting a subdivision approved and going through the steps that were necessary. And to Mr. Foggins' credit, I always had a good contact and communication with him and whenever I needed something, he always responded relatively promptly. So my partner Wayne Wissinger and I, we purchased a project outside the city limits but is serviced by the city of Kingman Water and Sewer as much of it is. We have the project sold and when we first came, we had a joint meeting with the Mojave County Planning and Zoning and Development Services and we had a member of the Mojave, of the city of Kingman Public Works attend as well. And at the meeting, we were told, I think incorrectly, that it would be six months to have the water and sewer reviewed by staff. So I, after that meeting, reached out to Mr. Fogg and we scheduled a meeting with the, the vice mayor and, and the public works department to try and find out what a true timeline would be and we got an answer of a month. So we're, we bought a subdivision that's about 75% complete. The water and sewer was already installed and permitted by the city of Kingman and we're just going to start finishing it off, paving and getting approved. So we'll kind of be a test case for you to see how long it takes to get that through that process. I think we're going to submit plans this Thursday. But as a developer, to tag on to what Travon said, is time is money and right now, money isn't cheap. As we all know, money is very expensive. So if the plans department and the public works department could provide an outsourced that was competent and quick to review and approve plans, I think most of the developers and builders would pay that fee to get their plans through. But if you go in for a review for something that should take three weeks and it takes six months, it's not just the time that's lost, it's the changing economy and also in rising interest rates that create a, a big impact to the developer's budget. So I would just suggest that if there is an opportunity to have a very competent outsourcing and the builder or developer could pay that expedite fee, I think that would be something that would be welcomed. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Pete Profit?
I just signed in.
Thank you, Pete. Our county supervisor, Travis Lincolnfelter.
Just observing today, just here.
Great. Thanks, Travis. Tyler Ankle?
Hi, council and mayor. Thanks for the opportunity and for setting up the, the meeting today. We're, we're grateful for the responsiveness from, from council and staff recently. It does seem like things, things have been changing and going in the right directions as far as responsiveness, getting, getting answers to questions and, and things moving forward. I do think in order to stay out of the details a little bit, just an overarching thing for, for city staff would be that just overall attitude and customer service towards development has been what we feel pretty negative over the last decade and, and nothing about, you know, the particular staff now, but, but I've been in our business for 11 years now and it's always seemed like there's, there's been a, a pretty negative attitude towards development and a little bit of an anti-development attitude where I feel like over that time, for the most part, my relationships with the city council is kind of the opposite, that they want Kingman to grow, they're looking for, for smart growth and a growing organism is usually a healthy one, you know? You get stagnant and, and bad things happen. So I think if, if there's a way to shift that to more of a, a customer service and, and how can I help you? How can we get this approved together? How can we get through this, this problem and, and come to a resolution that we're, that we're both happy with? It would go a long way in just all of the, the issues, whether that's subdivisions or a house permit or, or anything in between. I think a lot of it is, is just kind of the, the attitude that's, that's been taken on. And then one of the big things again, that's cost us a lot of money over the years, which it is what it is. A lot of people complain about developers making money, but that's what, what any business is for, right? You have to, have to make some money or the business has to, has to close down. So the biggest thing is, is the timeframe and I know engineering's had a hard time, they've been understaffed, but again, going back to, to customer service, I, I'm looking here at the, the city's timeframe for planning and zoning items for preliminary plots and final plots is 95 working days. So that's 23.75 weeks, calendar weeks. If you divide 95 by four right now, that's what you get. So I looked up 12 other cities, Wickenberg, Phoenix, Stotler, Buckeye, Oro Valley, Saurita, Gilbert, Flagstaff, Morana, Bullhead, Prescott, Cottonwood. So the average of those 12, and they vary, some are longer and shorter, but their average is 5.25 calendar weeks. So that's, that's for the whole process. Five weeks versus Kingman's, you know, longest we say we're going to take is 20, almost 24 weeks. So it's, you know, four, five, six times, seven times as long and that's just what we, we say we're trying to get to. That's not even what we're, we're always hitting. So, so some of these cities are, are doing it in two weeks. A lot of them are one month and of all of those two months was the, the long end where, where we're exceedingly far, far past that. So if that alone could be worked on and we could get all those down, I think a lot of the headaches, at least on the subdivision side, would be, would be solved. And that was my, my, my main comments for today unless you got any other, other questions.
I have a question for you. Earlier it was mentioned that in a previous city quarterly meetings to collaborate and kind of work on the process were very helpful to that town and, and to improving. And I'm wondering if Engel Holmes would be willing to participate and, and the rest of the people in this room, willing to participate in those types of meetings so that, you know, because I don't think we're going to hit it out of the park today. It's probably an ongoing thing where we need to build this relationship and open the lines of communication.
Yeah, we would definitely be willing to, to participate. Kingman unfortunately doesn't have a functioning building association. They've done rounds and rounds of different ones and they've all failed eventually. Even the Northern Arizona, which is Flagstaff and everything, had a branch that was part of the National Association, they just stopped functioning as well for some reason. So I don't know why that is, but anyway, we're kind of informally communicate and, and can get, get support for meetings like that to, to have ongoing discussions on, on what's working or different ideas that the public might have that could help, help overall.
That'd be great. Thank you.
That it, Tyler?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Tyler?
Okay, thanks, Tyler.
Joe Julis?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. It's gone last week, so I'm not really, don't have a sheet of paper and stuff like that, but with Travon and Tyler and all that, it's pretty much the same thing is when, when we come in for a new subdivision or a new project, you know, we have these meetings that are supposed to be preliminary, help us out, you know, lead us in the direction that we're supposed to go. I can't say that I've been in one where I've walked out and said that I had some direction and other than we're just going to make it up and turn it in and see what happens. That to me is a real problem because that's why we have the meeting at the beginning. You know, they're making us have these meetings to where they want to see our designs, want to see all this stuff. Well, then when there's some questions that we have, I don't know if we get the answers. We, we walk out of there and it's just a design build after that, you know? And then, then you get all the comments and then, you know, you, you address those comments and then you get more comments and it just never seems to be concrete. Doesn't, you know, and then when we ask for help, I don't know if we get it, you know? I'm not an engineer and so we ask some questions and stuff and it's kind of like, well, you can, or you know, and it's just kind of like we tiptoe around. So the problem is there too, is that in Kingman, I don't know if everybody pays attention or not, but pretty much it's all development right now. It's going to keep coming because there's not a lot of lots to buy for people, so people are going to have to make their own. And it's just going to continue to get more and more into their offices. So it, those are the, the main problems that I see. You know, I can piggyback off of everybody else. It's the same comments for everybody else. I've got projects that have been there for three years, two years, a year, I still don't have anything. And so it's kind of frustrating. You put a lot of, you know, time is money and, you know, some projects we've been in and they're like, oh, we liked the first time you brought it in. We're like, oh, here we go again. So I think it's the same issues, time, you know, some real answers when you need them. And if we're going to have the meetings to design stuff at the beginning and get the okays, it'd be nice to walk out of that meeting and have a, something in our mind that, all right, we're going to put it on paper and we're going to turn it in. You know, so I think that's kind of the major issue for me, along with, I'm going to piggyback off of Travon and Tyler and everybody else. It's kind of the same thing. Everybody's having the same problems. So that's all I have.
Any questions for Joe?
So I know one of the things we talked about is, and you just mentioned it, but I sort of want to put an exclamation point after this. We, Kingman is in need of new homes. We need, we need to be able to house people that we're trying to attract here, the new jobs we're trying to attract here. It's a big cycle and you've got several subdivisions and you're not the only one that you, you can't get out of the approval phase to start building them.
Correct.
And can you tell us the example you gave me about where you designed something three times and then went back to the first one so that everybody can kind of hear that experience?
Well, and so let's, let's, I'm going to take blame too because I, I started it, so I probably screwed up just as much. Not saying they screwed up, but I, you know, I was learning too. But we have a project that's, that's going in that's, I don't know, 100 duplex lots, you know, trying to get that, that housing for everybody and, and it, it's a drainage issue. It's always a drainage issue. So we've done it and then we, we came back and we designed it again and then we designed it again for the third time and then it was like, well, we liked the first one better, so now we're redrawing it again. That's the project's been going on for three years. It just doesn't seem like it's stopped, so.
Do you, do you know how much that cost you to design?
Well, I haven't got Jed's bill yet, but I'm sure I'm not going to like it. But that's the thing, you know, that's the thing, that every time you redesign it, costs us money. It's the same thing, you know, we, we come in and have that beginning meeting with planning and zoning and showing what we have and then we turn it in and then it wasn't anything that we really talked about or got any advice on. So that automatically is a second one. So it's just kind of like that. And I don't know, sometimes it's just, it's like we overthink things. I'm not saying that we should break the rules or bend the rules, but at some point, we've got to move forward, you know? And like I said, we've, we've also had projects where an outside person has, has done the comments. Well, I get them and we fix it and then we get more comments from somebody else and it just, I mean, I'm sure if I handed every one of you, I'd get different comments every time that I gave you rather than just the person that did it, so. And I think, you know, that's why engineers have their stamps, right? I mean, they're the professionals. I mean, it, it's on them to make it right, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, Joe.
Yep, thank you.
Can I chime in on, you asked about the cost?
Actually, Kevin, I was going to call on you anyway because I saw, I already wrote your name down, so come on up.
So, I mean, you're asking about cost, right? So that's a perfect example. We had an investor willing to invest $30 million in that project. We couldn't give them an answer of when it would actually turn dirt. So, I mean, if you want to know cost, there's real numbers involved and those are big numbers. Now that same investor was also interested in investing commercial. They're in, they're a big group, they have tons of money. And so not only are we turning away from our project, but we're turning them away from how many other projects in the city of Kingman because, again, we're not talking about six weeks or six months even, we're talking about years to get things approved and it's just, I think that's why everybody's in this room right now because we're just shaking our heads. We don't know what else to do. And at some point, somebody's got to take responsibility for being in charge of the people that are underneath them and ensuring that they do the job that they're being paid for. And they do it in an efficient manner and they serve the people that they work for, namely the taxpayers of Kingman and the people that are trying to put money back into the community. And if we don't have the right person in charge, how do we fix it? Do we continue to coddle to the person that's supposed to be in charge or do we put some standards in place and say, you've got to meet these things or move on and let's get somebody in that can actually take care of that job and do it correctly? And I think that's the biggest thing with, with what everybody's saying, the time. You know, you look at any, I mean, I talked to friends of mine that develop in California and I tell them how long we're waiting for subdivisions here, they cannot believe it. They're flabbergasted. These are people that are used to doing it in LA and San Diego where, you know, it's, it's the worst area to, to try to get something approved and they get theirs through faster than we get ours through in the little tiny town of Kingman. It's crazy. Just, just crazy. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what else you could say about it, you know, so.
Any other questions for Ms. Dr. And by the way, council, this is Kevin Ott.
Sorry, I should've.
No, I'm, and I, I should've introduced your, because I wrote, anyway, Kevin, I appreciate, I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, so, I mean, and we've invested a lot of our time. We own a lot of companies here in town, a lot of businesses. You know, we're staying here and we've made this our home and we've reinvested our money. We employ, I don't know how many hundreds of people. So this isn't about the developers getting rich. I mean, yeah, we'll probably get rich along the way. That's the idea, right? It's the, that's our goal, but we also feed hundreds of families in town by what we do. And if we can't continue that train moving, it's a huge impact on Kingman. If I can't keep my guys working, they go somewhere else, you know? And I think it's the same for everybody here. I think Engel Holmes is, is no different. You know, they're employing a ton of people, they're, you know, they're building on, on Kingman and we want Kingman to, to become more than what it is. And there's only one way to get there. And at some point, we're going to make some changes that, that get us there and make it happen.
Kevin, can you, for those of us who don't build subdivisions, can you just give me an idea of what an, a, a good timeline would be for approving a subdivision? What's a reasonable timeline that we should shoot for so that the council knows kind of?
I mean, again, I, I think they brought up some examples of what other cities and other counties are doing and how fast they're able to turn those around. I think that should maybe be a starting point, at least a goal that we get, you know, can we even get close to those? Even if we got close, I think you wouldn't see all of us here today and nobody would be complaining. You know, we all understand there's, there's things that have to be done, but it's, I think it's the fact that we are just so far off. We're on another planet right now from what is normal out there, so, you know, I, I don't, what do you think, Travon? I mean, you guys have been doing this a long time? Is it four or five months? I don't know. I mean, I, I think most of us, if it took us three, four, or five months to get our subdivision approved, we, we probably would never, you'd probably never hear from us.
Okay.
You know, when it's taken years, that's, you know, that's, I think where you start to see a lot of disgruntled people, so.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Mayor, could I ask?
Yes.
Could I speak to you?
Actually, let me finish this list, there's a couple more and then.
I'd love to touch on a couple.
Okay. But I want to turn some time over to our city staff also, so. Mr. Parks, Ted Parks?
I've just signed in.
Just signed in? Okay, great. Thanks, Ted. And Mr. Kinslow?
I did.
Just signed in? Okay, great. Mr. Reed?
Yes.
I'll give you another five minutes.
Yeah, great. Thank you, mayor. Just, just to kind of piggyback on some of the comments that were made here, I, and, and I'm relatively new to Civil Works Firm, so I really don't know the process of this agency. I'm working through that right now. But one question for, for you folks, is there a planning commission for this? Yeah, okay. So I'll admit, Tulare County, California was the jurisdiction. I worked in this, in the agency there, population's about 65,000. One of the issues that we were having in a timing standpoint was the planning commission. Not saying that's good, bad or indifferent in any fashion whatsoever, but our agency actually did away with the planning commission. That saved anywhere from 30 to 60 days. And what we implemented was a project review committee. And that project review committee would take in the investment that this gentleman was talking about. So that project review, review committee would actually review the project from a preliminary standpoint. Now, there were certain standards for the supplemental to get the project review committee. The agents, the developer would actually pay a fee for that. The fee was pretty nominal and what we did is we just basically is all the department heads, fire, police, public works, planning, community development, everybody was in the room. We gave them the code requirements for that project and it went out in a written letter. Now, whether that was a viable project or not, it went out in writing and. Now, whether that was a viable project or not, it went out in writing and that was the starting point and basically the basis of that project. Now, there were other code requirements that came in specifically after that, but really not much. We really did a thorough review and giving them the guidelines that they need. And then the private sector was able to actually make a decision. I can pull the trigger. I think that's a reasonable project. No, 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 I'm not going to go there because it's not a reasonable project. So that project review committee actually would meet multiple times on some projects. And it was a, a, it was a good service to the community and turned out to work very well. Now, there were seven local agencies in that county and the county itself. The county had a planning commission and about half of the other agencies had a planning commission. Our agency was the first one to do away with it. And then several agencies followed suit after that just because of the timing of pushing the project. Now, the council that I had for years in that community was very business oriented and very proactive at trying to get projects out. So I just kind of want to piggyback on that. Thank you for my additional time.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. There was a gentleman from Allo, I'm sorry, on the back. Would you like, you raised your hand earlier.
How you doing? I'm Jim Carey with Allo Fiber. Thank you for meeting with us.
Jim, could you step a little bit closer so the mic catch?
Sure, sure. I'm not used to public speaking. So as you know, Allo's here to build infrastructure, making a significant investment in the community for things like economic development, things like that. And so as we make this investment, we're sort of, we're partnering up with the city to create an infrastructure. And there's been issues with us encroaching on the city's infrastructure. When the reality is where we should be in there as team and working like through the easements. Some of the, some of the, if we encroach on the water, the sewer, we're held to a mag standard, we're supposed to be six foot off. Certain places, we cannot do that. And that, it speaks to what he was saying, cost wise. If, if we can't encroach on that, then we're going to be, have to redesign the entire area, which could make it 10 times the cost. So that, that, making it way more per passing. So that would lower, that, that would lower that, probably that neighborhood on the list of being built. So it, I guess what I'm getting at is that, that we need to work more as partners as, as we build through these areas so that minimizes our costs and weaken light faster and the city itself sees a return on the investment that Allo's making in the city.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We want to turn some time over now to following our agenda, to city staff. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead. Please state your name again.
Sure. Hi, my name is Rob Sampson with Selberg Associates. I don't live here in Kingman, but I certainly have done a lot of business here with you guys over the last 23 years. And I'll be honest, we've never had any problems with the building department until the implementation of the conceptual site plan. And I don't think you guys have the staff to support these additional steps. I've got a project right now that, that Sean has done everything he can do to help me to get through it. And, you know, we were hired because we knew the process and we found that we didn't know the process. And I think that if a change is made like this, I really feel like there needs to be a better outreach to make sure that everybody who's designing in your community has it. Now, we went to the, you know, the pre-application meeting and I'd be the first to admit that I probably misunderstood, but when I left, I didn't think I needed it because I was getting the exact same comments from my pre-application meetings. That was my conceptual site plan. And then it came up and said, we need, we need that. It's like, I don't, I don't think that we need more government. And I, I hear all the comments and I understand what you guys are all saying. And if you ever work in someplace outside of Kingman, Bullhead is phenomenal. Like Havasu's doing pretty well. They have a checklist. I like that idea. It puts the onus on the private architect, designer, developer, engineer. I don't think you guys need to tell us how to do the design. In fact, I don't even think by the letter of the Board of Technical Registration, you're allowed to do that. So I don't know why you want to do that. So my feeling is keep the process as simple as possible. I know that all my friends and all my developer people that I've talked with in Kingman really do like the fact that back in 2011, 12, 13, we could boast that we could get in and out of here really quickly. And I don't feel like that happens right now. I feel like there is some delay times. Now, I'm only speaking from the commercial architecture side. I don't do anything with residential subdivisions. So I, I do feel the pain though. I know what it's like to own a business and every time you start down the path, you just never know the, the end process. But I will say that there is hope on the horizon. You know, the engineering department met with me on Friday because they knew that something was very important and needed to be done. Sean has called me after hours to try and make sure that I understood what the process was and certain things. So I don't think it's all doom and gloom. But I will say this conceptual site plan, until you're able to hire people to support these processes, I feel like you're just wasting your own time. You're setting unrealistic expectations and then you're also, you know, getting people frustrated because it says 25 days or 30 days and it ends up being 60. Well, whose fault is that? Right? And believe me, if I could find six people that want to work in drafting, I'd hire them in a minute. So if you're anyone looking, I'm here. They're not out there. So to say, well, this is baloney, hire more people. They're not out there. They're not coming to Kingman. They're not coming to Lake Havasu. They're not coming to Bullhead. So we have really got to rework how we reuse, how we use our resources. And having them do conceptual site plans, having them do pre-application meetings and write the same list each time and go through this is just more paperwork that could be spent better servicing taxpayers, answering a telephone or, you know, providing something. Certain times I've asked a question, I've been quoted back a code section. I said, this is, there's gray area. Here's what I want. Should I do this or this? And I get back two and a half pages of code section that I know how to read. I mean, I know how to read the code book as well as anybody. I didn't understand what they was asking. I need interpretation. That's what I need. So those are the only complaints I have, or only concerns I have. This conceptual site plan, if you guys could find it in your hearts to reevaluate that and get rid of it. I know it was just voted in, but man, what a waste of time it is for everybody, in my opinion. Don't lower the bar so that people who don't know what they're doing can, you know, be successful. Raise the bar so if they don't know, they don't come back. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We do want to try to end about four o'clock is because I need to turn some time over to, to staff also.
Mayor and counsel, want to thank you for having this meeting. I think it's critical that you follow through with suggestions and get this going in the right direction. I represent Benchmark Companies LLC out of Prescott, Arizona. We do many storages all over the state and currently have a project in for permitting. We're now 240-plus days out on that. There's nothing simpler than storage. I mean, it's straightforward. I came to this city with the, with the, I guess, I was figuring that everything would go smoothly. Planning and zoning went very smoothly. No complaints there. Smooth and very timely. Got to permitting and we've been just waiting and waiting and waiting. Some of these developers in this room, if you get with them, they can tell you what kind of cost you're looking at for a developer to buy a million dollar piece of ground and sit on it for a year, two years. It's very expensive. And I think all of you need to know those costs, what's happening out there. This city has got to get their act together and get these permits issued. There's no reason for these delays, delay after delay, comment after comment. You should not have third reviews, fourth reviews. It doesn't happen in other cities. And I hope that Kingman can do something about it. Thank you very much. My name is Bill Watson, by the way.
Thanks, Bill. Mr. Kinslow? And then I think you're going to end up being the last one.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I just.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Scott.
I just wanted to go over, it goes down to below even the offices and with all the inspections and stuff. We're dealing with inspectors between building and on the public and civil side. And it's almost to the point as a contractor, working civil right away, that I don't even want to do it anymore in the city of Kingman. We get to the extent that they're shutting us down. They're out there trying to get us on something that we can make more money in other things. And I've been letting other people know about this for two years now, three years now, and it's just getting worse on every job. I mean, we go out there and we're worried about getting shut down for the smallest things. Instead of public service, the city working with us to help us get things done. I mean, I should be able to call if I'm working in the middle of the road. We can't give them a time and say, hey, we're going to be here doing a sewer tap at 11:32. I want you here to inspect this. Hey, we're starting this today. We might be ready at eight o'clock in the morning, might be noon. We've got a slurry this road, we've got to open it back up. Well, I'll call and we'll be waiting four or five hours. I'll have five, six guys sitting on the side of the street waiting because inspectors are all at lunch together or just don't even want to come out. They're out to shut us down is all they care about. It's just getting, it's getting bad. And at this point, we have to do something on that category or else nobody's going to want to work in the city of Kingman in the right way. And that's about all I got to say and I appreciate it.
Thanks, Kate. Appreciate it. Scott, you got two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I just love numbers. So I want to give you some numbers. So for a single phase, we're typically investing over $3 million into the land, the street improvements. Right now, line of credit is between eight and nine percent. So for a single month delay, we're over $20,000 in interest costs just for that single phase. We have multiple projects going. And so if you're delaying five phases, we're talking more than $100,000. And it may seem like a small thing when Travon brings up trying to get early permits. But it, that's why we care so much is because it, I'll use a subdivision called Rancho Santa Fe recently. The street improvements we're in, and I want to say it was four months, five months, where we couldn't start, there was, it could have been a win-win for the city. The city would have got permit fees, development impact fees sooner. But instead, it just sat there. We couldn't, couldn't build anything. We had to pay the carrying costs on that. I think everyone talked a lot about just the culture. It'd be great if we could align that with the city council's views that we want to grow because it doesn't feel like that's really the way the staff sees it. But thank you for your time.
Thanks, Scott. Mr. Fogan?
I have a question. I do. And it might be for Mr. Cooper. So in several of the communications that we received, they were referring to statutes, ARS statutes.
Yes, ma'am.
So can you just, can you enlighten me? Are those, are those city? Do they filter on down to the city? How do we look at those statutes and those timelines?
The statute's going to be controlling whatever the statute is. And then generally, we try to adopt ordinances that will effectuate, if we need to, that will effectuate the intent of that statute. So without, you know, knowing all the statutes they're referencing, yes, statutes control. And then we use local ordinances to guide under that, that plan, if that makes sense.
So statutes prevail?
Correct.
And then we are, we are working within our ordinances?
Right.
So if somebody comes and states, quotes a statute and we're not meeting a timeline because our ordinance isn't within those guideline, what, what prevails?
So if the statute generally doesn't have, I would say, specific guidelines or timeframes except for like hearing dates, but it may mention that we need to establish some timeframes, then that's what the city would do is establish some timeframes. And the idea is for the city to stay within those timeframes.
And what's the, if we don't stay within those timelines?
Well, there can always be, there, yeah, there's way too many ordinances and statutes for me to be able to say specifically what happened.
Let's just say review. Statutory timelines for review.
I don't believe there's any statutory timelines for review. That's going to be more within, and I assume you're talking, yeah, that's going to be more within our ordinances or our policies. So if there's some failures to comply with some statutes, there could be an automatic approval. There could be a kickback and start over. There could be if the, if the development community feels that it's not processing the way it should process, they could file some mandamus action. But generally, I think this kind of conversation is to help us to steer us away from those sort of things. But it's hard for me to give, there's too many various statutes that are involved in the ARS as well as ordinances and policies from to give you a very exact answer. But the idea is we should all be in compliance with whatever statute exists, whatever ordinance exists or whatever policy we have.
Okay. Because in Mr. Noble's letter, did you, did you receive a copy of that? Okay. I'll be happy to.
We, we did. And when Mr. Allred speaks, I believe he's planning on speaking to that very.
Okay. That was a great, short answer. I will look forward to Phil's presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Fogan, I will let you call on staff members then to.
Yeah. Actually, want to start by saying thank you for the feedback. It is our goal and continues to be our goal to have projects move forward. We have had a number of challenges. I believe that's been pointed out and documented. But in an effort to try to address some of these, thought that it would be important for my team to be able to provide some comments and some insight into what the lists are that we've been reviewing from the development community. So Phil, if you want to come up and, and talk, that would be great.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to, to speak. I appreciate all the concerns that have been expressed and I understand that they're important. And I just want everyone to know that it's our desire to get plan reviews completed in the most timely manner that we can. We're, it's, it's been discussed. We're, we're struggling with, with staffing and whatnot, but we're still working and always striving to find ways to improve. Over the last few weeks, I've had an opportunity to meet with, or have a discussion with a couple of the stakeholders. And I appreciate the time that they've, they've given me to, to have that discussion. It's been productive to hear their concerns. It's also been productive for me to express my concerns as, as, as well. I think in, in the instances where I've had those discussions, one-on-one with these individuals, we've came out understanding each other better and understanding the concerns that, that, that each of us have and the challenges that, that we're facing. I, I would also say that those discussions have been productive in identifying ways to improve. And I think some of the, the suggestions you're going to hear from Mr. Fogan include items that have resulted from those conversations. I also like to, to mention that when we're looking at projects, we're looking at plans, we're, we're looking at it with the lens of we're an owner of infrastructure. We're a custodian of permanent records. And, and more than anything, we're, we're public servants looking out for the public good, overall safety and welfare of, of the public. Want to make it clear that we acknowledge that we're having a hard time with meeting timely reviews. I also want to make it clear though that we also have a different perspective and understanding of, of the situations that have been brought before the council, right? And so we, we just want to make sure that everyone recognizes that there's different opinions, different perspectives, different recollections. And it's my hope that as we have conversations, that it's not a one-sided conversation. It's a conversation where we're allowed to collaborate and, and talk. The correct one item that's been circulating around, there's the, the reference to, to the statute. The, the statute establishes, says that we need to establish a licensing timeframe. The one thing I want to point out, and it's, it's no excuse, but I just want to point out because it's one error that's being circulated, is that, that within that statute, it says timeframes do not apply to construction or development of a residential lot, including pools, hardscape, walls, subdivisions, or master plan communities. And I think that's the legislative. And I think that's the legislature acknowledging that some of these projects can be complicated sometimes and, and it takes a little bit of effort to, to, to complete. I just want to mention that we're all working hard. Our, our guys aren't sitting around doing nothing. We're, we're, we're working hard and we'll continue to work hard and we'll continue to work hard to improve. The, the thing that I would like to request from the development community is to help us as well. We, we, we need to have complete submittals, clean plans, and clean designs when, when, when they come in. And the better that we can improve this, the, the, the better we can move forward and get things done in a more timely, timely fashion. So certainly can answer questions that, that have come up. I, I know we're running short on time, but I just wanted to kind of provide a little bit of context. And I, I'm here, I'm committed to working with people. We've, we've been doing that. I, I've made myself available to a lot of the people that have, have come up and, and spoken. I have regular meetings scheduled with people to discuss issues. So I think we're trying. We certainly need help with getting additional staff. And anyway, those are my thoughts.
Questions for Mr. Allred to start with. Yes.
Start. So I'll ask you the same question I asked Tyler Engel about the quarterly meetings to collaborate on the process. Phil, do you think that the city could set something up like that where we could have a similar meeting like this? Where we talk about the, the process, what's improved, what hasn't, what suggestions maybe are out there on, on both sides? Because I, I think one of the biggest problems here is that the communication from both sides, you know, Joe talked about, you know, not walking out of those meetings and not really having a clear picture. If they had a clearer picture or if they knew what those clean designs, if they had, if they had a better idea, maybe it would lighten your load. And so I guess I'm just asking if we could do something like this with the quarterly meetings to just keep working together until we all get on the same page and, and make this a more efficient process.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And along, along those lines, I didn't know if you were finished. Along those lines, are you seeing some, some trends in some things that are coming across your, your desks for review that could be communicated during those meetings? And, and hopefully, if it's happening across the board, it, it too will lighten your load?
Absolutely.
Okay. I think that would be effective communication. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and again, I think we're, we're, we're trying to communicate that, but we can certainly do it in any forum, any format, anything that will help. We're, we're certainly willing to have those conversations.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Watkins?
Yes, Counselor.
Mr. Allred, I'm wondering about our ordinances and if they are more strict than state statute. Because typically, state statute provides a general framework. And then I believe many of the times, cities will come in and try to specify what they want in the ordinances. I've heard comments today that there used to be an old zoning code and now there's a new one. I'm not entirely sure if that's the, being referred to as the conceptual site plan, but are there areas that you see that could be modified for improvement?
I would need to give that a little bit of thought, right? The, the, and Carl can probably describe it better. You know, the zoning code is, you know, the, the legislature allows us to establish our own zoning code, right? There, there is no overarching, to my knowledge, overarching zoning, state zoning code that leaves it more to the, to the local municipalities. But certainly, we can look to see if there's anything that, that we can improve on. I, I would say a lot of the construction standards, we, we follow the, the best practices. You know, asphalt's asphalt. And so how you compact asphalt and, and other things are, that's not going to change per se. But we're always willing to, to talk and, and, and see if there is something that we can do to improve.
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you, Ms.
I have a couple more questions. So I know that we're going to get, the council's going to get a, a list of improvements or changes or a plan next week. But I'm wondering about the, the, the comments about the conceptual site plan versus just giving a checklist and leaving it up to the architect to, to hit the checklist and, and clean up that process in that way.
So there's, there, there's certainly things that can be done to improve. And, and I'm probably stepping on Sean's toes a little bit here.
Sorry, Sean.
You know, the, we have a pre-application meeting that's, that's optional. They don't have to do that. What is required is a conceptual site plan. I think the intent of requiring a conceptual site plan is to get information to the customer sooner rather than later so that they don't start working on final drawings and then all of a sudden, hey, you can't have a driveway here or, or there's an issue here. So it gives staff an opportunity to kind of give them some, some direction on, here's some things that you need to look at, here's, here's some things that you need to consider, right? So I think the intent was for it to help.
But it maybe isn't quite there.
It, perhaps not. Like maybe, I think what's happening and I think what, what Rod is, is mentioning is we're, we're doing a pre-app and then we're doing a concept plan. And, and you're, and both of those, those are preliminary things and we're basically saying the same thing with both. So maybe one of the things that we can do is if you have a pre-app, maybe you don't need to do the concept plan, right? You can just go to the next step.
Right. Okay.
Mayor? Mayor Watkins, I have a follow-up question.
Yes, Counselor Pat.
Mr. Allred, one of the comments earlier today was they would submit, some of the developers would submit a question on how to interpret our zoning code or our conceptual site plans. And then they would receive what our code or plan states without the interpretation. Do, do you yourself find it easy or difficult to interpret the code and, and site plan? Like, you know, sometimes when I'm reading law, I don't, I might not know or interpret it well myself, so I go get a second pair of eyes or look further into the matter by researching it. And sometimes even I have difficulty understanding and interpreting the law. Are, are our codes easy to understand and clarify?
I think in a lot of cases there, there are. I think there, in other cases, there's some ambiguity, but I think that's going to be the case for pretty much anything, right? Unless you create a 100-page manual saying this, this, and this. But in a lot of cases, yes, I think it's clear. In other cases, it's not. And, and there's a process for them to, if they don't like the staff's interpretation, they can, there, there's a process where they can appeal it, right? But with regard to the zoning code, I'm, I'm not a planner, I'm an engineer. I, I can certainly let the planning department speak to that. But in, in a lot of cases, I, I think our, our code is, is clear. I think people like to find nuance, and so we try to work with that as, as best we can.
Okay, Counselor Salee.
Would it be reasonable for us to say we're going to fast-track these subdivisions that have been sitting for a long time? Get them, get them approved, get them out. Commercial projects that have been sitting, things that are, these big projects that are a large investment into our city. Is there a way that we could cut some red tape and, and get these approved and, and get them off, off of our pile of?
We are constantly trying to find ways to do that.
Okay.
And, and right now, we're, we're working hard to, to get the backlog out. Like, we have people working on weekends, we have people working on holidays. We're, we're just, we're trying to get them out so that we can kind of get back and reset and, and start to, to make some, some good progress.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
My question is, are you, are we utilizing our, our third party as much as we could?
We are. The, the third party, at least from, for the one that I'm using right now, is not working out quite the way I hoped. And so I, I'm looking to make a, a change there. They are helping, they're not helping as much as I would like them to help.
So the new vendor that you're looking at, are, are you looking to switch to them because they will be more helpful?
If I make, when I make a change, it's going to be because I think it's going to be more helpful.
I'm just, I'm just thinking if, you know, if it could be fast-tracked, that could be a way to fast-track it. If we don't have the manpower internally, if we could send it out to multiple vendors, the two of them, and get them fast-tracked.
Yeah, the, the, the thing that I'm noticing is there's, there's some spin-up time, right? They, they, they need to get familiar with, with our code and, and our, our standards and, and whatnot. So there's, there's a little bit of a time that it takes to get them up to speed. But my hope is, once we get them up to speed, yes, we can help them or they can help us dramatically, right? That's, that's our hope.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're utilizing those resources to the fullest extent that we can be utilizing those resources. Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions. Phil, on mag spec, is there no give to that at all? I know, working with ALO and encroachment on city property, I mean, a lot of the utilities, you know, they, they say two feet. Mag is wanting us six feet. Now, mag is just a recommendation, it's not the state law. It's, it's recommendations that we've adopted and we've changed some of the mags to, to fit our scenarios here, right?
Correct. So we've, the, the, the city council's adopted a standard, right? But I, I'd say to, to that point, there, there is, right? And, and with ALO, we are working with them. We, they, they, they came to us and said, hey, here's a couple of instances where this isn't, isn't working. And we provided a response and said, okay, you can go within two feet and you got to be a certain depth below. And, and we're, so yeah, there, there is some, some, some take. When we can look at it and, and, and make sure that we're looking at it the best we can, I'll say that once we start to kind of departing from what is considered best practice, we won't know if we made a good decision until maybe 20 years from now, right? But, but yes, we're, we are working with them. And, 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 and we're trying to find ways to allow them to come closer when, when there's absolutely no other alternative.
Is that it? I thought you had two questions.
Well, I have another one. I see, I hate to call him out, but I see Donnie Ward here. I know he, we've had a project of his that got turned in and we never really talked about it today, but, and it's just a storage building. You know, and we're still waiting on engineering, I do believe. Is there an update on that or has it been released?
Which one are you talking about?
I'm talking about the storage building behind the Indian dealership, I believe. Has that been, has that been released? Do we have a permit on that yet?
I'll need a check.
I, I haven't updated that.
Okay.
I'll let Eric talk to that.
Okay, thank you, Phil.
So, yeah, we sent out comments on the storage building and they were resubmitted via email yesterday. So we're still waiting for the required hard copies and so forth that we need.
Okay, because I, I, I don't know for sure, but I understand this was submitted in January?
I can't recall. It, it, it could have been. I think we sent out comments maybe three weeks ago. They had asked for a variance on one of the drainage requirements, which I, I allowed because it, the actual redesign was a better product than what was originally proposed. But like I said, we received the email yesterday with the new submittal.
Just seems like a long time to get a building permit and get it through engineering for a storage building.
It, it is a long time. We're, we're inundated with, with plan reviews. There's, there's a lot to do, but as Phil mentioned, we're, we're working our hardest to get through these.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, Counselor Ward?
On that same line with Donnie, he has a project for a Hyundai dealership. Where?
Yes, High Desert, Hyundai.
Where are we at on that?
It's currently, they resubmitted for their, their second review and that's nearly complete. So it's, it should be upcoming here shortly. We'll release that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Foggan? I mean, Manager Foggan, is there somebody you want to call else from staff?
Yeah, I just thought we'd give Sean a, a minute. I think Phil covered some of his stuff, but.
Thank you for the opportunity to come up here and speak to you guys. Just kind of listening to what everybody says, I have tons of notes of things that I feel as a whole we can work on and make better. A couple, couple of points, I, I heard it come up multiple times with the early permits. I, I would like to know what isn't working about that. So I think a lot to the point of the quarterly meetings, I think that's something that would be extremely beneficial. In, in my division, we're definitely up for that. Even meeting with Travon and Engel Holmes to see what, what the issues are with the early permit because it is a very new policy. I think at this point, we've issued, I think, three to four of those. So I, I feel that that's still a very new process, right? And for me, in that process, it's making sure that I, I have these things in place before I'm issuing this, this, this agreement. Because there's a lot of things legally, liability-wise, in, in the short term and long term, that could cause issues for the city in doing this, right? So that, that's kind of where I'm at on that. I would like to know what, what it is. I'm willing to meet with, with Travon and figure that out, absolutely. When it comes to the, the zoning code, there's lots that's, that's come up about, about the zoning code. And in that, it is a fairly new zoning code. We, we are aware of some of these errors and things that are in the zoning code. However, it's not just a simple process of saying, oh, hey, we need to change this, right? There's research that needs to go into each and every one of these before these things get changed. And that, that will go before the zoning commission and, and then ultimately come to the council to make some of these changes. So we, we do have a running list that we are trying to get to. But again, I, I feel that it's more important for us to work and get these reviews and these subdivisions and these things out other than changing this document, right? So that's kind of where, where we're at as far as that goes. And then to the, to the next point, the, the third-party thing has come up. We've been very, very successful on the building section with our third-party. But again, the individual who we have assigned to us through this third-party is somebody who has had lots of experience here in our area, is, is very, very apt to how we do things. So the spin-up time on him, this, this process for us actually started multiple years ago, right? And that's proven to be very successful in that point of view. As you all know, on the planning and zoning side, we, we've kind of gotten behind on some things, you know, but as of within the last, I would say, six months, it's, it's become to a point where it's a really big issue. That's, has to do with we, we lost our 30-year veteran to where his 10 minutes of looking at something is the same as another planner's two, three hours, right? Because it's so ingrained in him, he can look at something and make it happen, right? We're fortunate enough that he actually has come back to work for us on a contract. So that's helped to get, get things out a lot faster. But he can only dedicate 10 hours a week to us, right? Because he is working another full-time job. So that's something that's helped. We have reached out to third-party, again, same third-party of our building department. We have that lined up, that begins on Monday. So again, there'll be some spin-up time for us on that. However, I think working with multiple third-parties, as rich as a third-party, I think we, we were moving towards being able to do that. And the thought process is here is that those, those third-parties are going to remain in place, you know, even when we are, get up to staffing, right? And it's difficult to find quality people, I'll tell you that. We, we get up, we get up to the, the staffing levels and then we can use that third-party to supplement where we're at. So I'll entertain any other questions or anything, thing that.
Questions for Sean?
The ongoing list you have of those items in the code that need. The ongoing list you have of those items in the code that need to be tweaked or removed, I'd like to see that list, you know, come to council so that we can officially put a pause on those. And that way, we're going to say that we are not going to enforce these codes until they're cleaned up or changed so that if they get forgotten about or different staff comes in and then they try to enforce them, we won't have those problems. I think that the least we can do as a city is just say, we recognize these following items are not what we had intended or what, they're not the best thing for our community. We're going to place these on hold until planning and zoning can go through and make those necessary changes or remove them. So I think, without having to do all that research first, if you may just come to us with the list and we can officially say, we're taking these off the books until we get that fixed.
Absolutely. We can do that.
That'd be great.
Additional note to that, we're already doing that administratively, right? So when it comes to the issue with solar panels, that was something that we decided across the board and we absolutely have made this known to the industry that, hey, our code says this, we are not going to enforce this, right? And I do understand the aspect of us coming back at a later time, right? We do have the intentions, all intentions, to bringing that forth to have it officially changed, but administratively, we're already approaching it that way. Absolutely no problem with bringing that stuff to the council as well.
I appreciate that you're doing that. I'd just like to make, take it one step further as a promise that this is, this is never going to change. We're not just, we're not going to get a new guy and then all of a sudden, you know, he's excited about not letting those solar panels go up on the east side.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, and to that point, Counselor Staley, I just want to make sure that your list is the same as the industry's concerned. So if you guys are matching those up?
Right. So our list actually was started from communication with the industry. They pointed out these things and we absolutely, we'll bring it forward and...
And maybe just start prioritizing them with the stakeholders. And even if you brought one a month through, you know, I'm pretty sure P&amp;Z can handle it. So if you guys can handle it, if you bring one, if you bring at least one through. So we show some good faith in bringing those through to council.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Mayor Watkins, if I may, and Carl, I think you're about to jump in, but I don't, I don't feel comfortable with having a code on the books and then saying, we're not going to enforce it. I feel much more comfortable with looking at the codes, finding the ones that need to be removed or revised, and actually doing it and it being stated in black and white in our code what it is, not some subjective interpretation or, oh, yeah, well, you know, we don't, we don't enforce that. No. If it's in our codes, we should, I don't want people to get the wrong impression, well, they'll enforce these but not these and some of the other ones are subject to interpretation. We need to know what our code says. We need to make it clear, concise, but also actually doable for our developers. So I would appreciate if we actually came forward sooner rather than later with that administrative process, identifying the codes that need to be worked out and then we can make those changes expeditiously.
Absolutely.
Any other comments, counsel? Okay. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Actually, we are running out of time, so, because it's almost time. So I need to get, turn some time over to Manager Foggan. Any other staff that you wanted to call in?
Oh, that's it.
Okay. So I'll give some more time to you. Actually, I'm going to give the remaining time to you.
Well, I'm going to be fast because we don't have any more remaining time. So, first of all, I just want to state for the record that I am absolutely pro-growth. I have worked for municipalities for 26 years. Fifteen of those years were with a community that grew at double-digit growth, over 10% on average every single year. The two major projects that I've been working on since walking through the door are two interchange projects that will absolutely change the face of this community for the better, for unforeseeable future. So, pro-growth, I have a team that's working extremely hard. I think you saw that. One of the things that I would say is that I'm worried that we're not working smart, but we're working hard. And so we've actually got to work smart. And then the other thing is that I, along with my team, no matter whether it's the people out at the counter or these folks in the room, expect us to provide 100% great customer service. And that is an expectation that if we fall short, I want to know about. That is an expectation that goes without excuse. So if we provide poor customer service, I want to know about that. The other piece is that we will be fair and consistent with everybody, whether you're building one unit or you're building 500 units, whether you're doing commercial, no matter what you're doing, we will be fair and consistent. That has got to be the expectation that all of us in, on my team are committed to. So really quickly, appreciate the input. I've actually got some good notes that I'll be working with the team on. I wanted to share our improvement plan for the development process that we are going to implement. The first one is the city manager and the development leadership team will be surveying the development community, those that use our development process. So we're going to develop a survey that is, we're going to start surveying that week of July 3rd. Survey results will be reviewed monthly by city manager and then development leadership team in an effort to identify needed improvements. Over time, that will, we will track that and share that information. We're going to conduct a development process and policy audit to ensure the city is following industry best practices. That work will begin July 10th. The development departments will be open to the public, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., starting July 10th. The city will share average review times for all major development processes weekly, starting the week of August 7th, and will show progress of review times over time. The city will provide an estimated completion time for all major development process reviews, starting August 7th. What I will say in early meetings with my team is that the data is not, has not been good and we do not know where specific projects are. So that will be important to moving us forward. The engineering department will change their review process by reducing the number of written comments and instead adding redlining to plans. That will begin July 10th. The development departments will develop a review process to give prioritizations to resubmitted plans by July 10th. And the planning and engineering departments will identify third-party providers that can help reduce plan review times and the need for extensive staff examination. The planning department will begin this June 12th and the engineering department will have that third-party, that new third-party provider in place by July 10th. And we certainly will look into the other suggestions that have been made by the development community today. And with that, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that you are including council on those surveys?
Absolutely.
Okay. Perfect.
I mean, that is the plan on the reporting side.
Okay. Perfect. And also the timelines?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that, yes. That'll be in my weekly.
And that'll be both for subdivisions?
It'll be for all major, it'll be for all major permits and processes.
All right. Perfect. White, I like where you're going with this.
Thank you.
Let's, hopefully all of you will all see the implementation of it and we'll work on that.
Well, I appreciate that. And I will say, I do want to say, I like the, I like the quarterly review process, but I would want to point out that I know my teams and myself included are more than willing to meet monthly with anybody or every other week. I think that's happening in the engineering department and it's also, I believe, an invitation from our planning department as well, so.
Okay. Manager Foggan, thank you for that report and those updates. And I was just seeing that same thing. On big projects, yeah, quarterly's not enough. Monthly, weekly, bi-weekly, that needs to happen. And so I appreciate that suggestion and improvement. Wanted to thank all of you again for being here and taking time out of your busy day. And I appreciate, a lot of your comments were very fair comments. I appreciate the decorum that you've had as far as presenting these problems, because I know you have frustrations. So I appreciate your level-headedness in talking to the council and staff and trying to work through these problems. I know we're going through some growing pains, there's some adjustments that are going to happen. There's still going to be some glitches and we know that, but please, communication has been talked about by a number of council members. That is key, is communication. And even if you think you're just, you walk away from a meeting and it didn't accomplish anything, turn around and say, wait, I want more clarification. Speak up. We all need to do that in any situation that we have as far as human beings, any kind of meetings we have. I think our world would be a better place if we communicated better. And once again, I want to thank all of you for being here. And I think without anything else, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.